Looks like we're at seven o'clock, so we're gonna start our evening with our workshop here at seven, and we're gonna take that until 7:30, at which time we'll go into our regular agenda. In our workshop for this evening, we're going to cover two things. This is the wrong pad, excuse me. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about both a local law in front of us from the city council, as well as the draft law around parking standards, right, John?
Yeah.
So with that, I'll have you lead us through that conversation. Do you wanna cover the first one?
Yeah, I'll take care of the subdivision one, the referral local law. So you have on your agenda tonight, a local law that was referred from the city council. This amends section 223-25C of the existing zoning code, and this comes as a request. You should have in your packets, a letter from Cuddy and Fader dated October 11th, on behalf of Seekon Beacon Developments LLC, that's the LLC for the Edgewater project. And what the request is, is to modify the existing provisions of the zoning code, which permit what we're calling sort of an internal subdivision, and I'll explain what I mean by that in a second, for residential properties in addition to commercial. Currently, our code permits it for commercial properties, does not permit it for residential. Now, what is "it"? So this internal subdivision process. We actually went through an application involving this particular provision of the code a couple of years ago in 2020 for hiplofts for building 16. That's the building that originally they were going to sort of refurbish. It turns out, it was too structurally unsound to save, they ended up tearing it down and rebuilding it. And for financing purposes, they came before the board to get what we're calling this internal subdivision, meaning the building itself is on its own lot. So usually, the reason why developers will go through this process is mainly for financing purposes. When you have construction loans versus long-term financing, sometimes it makes sense to have certain buildings on separate lots, so that they can be subject to different financing at different times during the project. So, fast forward, Scenic Beacon Developments LLC has asked the city council to change the current code, so that that's not just applicable to commercial projects, but also applicable to residential projects like Edgewater, where we have one lot that has multiple buildings on the lot, and that way they can separate their financing, separate their construction financing from their long-term financing, in order to help make the project more viable in today's crazy interest rate environment. So that's the purpose of the local law. You can see from the draft that was referred to you, there really are some pretty minor revisions to the existing language. You'll see in 223-25C, it really just adds to the term "non-residential," adds residential or mixed-use projects, and carries that throughout. Clarifies that it applies not just when you are doing a two-phased site plan, which frankly, this board, ever since I've been sitting with the board since 2010, I don't think you've ever done a two-phased site plan for a commercial project, but it clarifies that you can implement this provision, not just in that process, but also subsequent to a single-phase site plan review, which is typically the manner in which you review your site plans. So that's sort of the purpose of the local law, and the revisions that are being proposed. The city council did refer it to you for your comments. They have a public hearing scheduled for, I know I have the document here, for November 27th. So ideally, I think the city council is looking for your comments tonight on the proposed local law.
Great, thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
So just to sum up, it's to simply take the bulk of the existing law and modify it to include residential or mixed-use projects, right?
Yeah, and I should've also mentioned, an important part of this, that's part of the existing law and will remain as part of the law, is that the site itself, for zoning purposes and for the purposes of the site plan approval that's issued, is still treated as a whole, so it's not...
As a review.
Yeah, so you're not applying like different setbacks to the individual parcels. All of the conditions of the original approval remain for the whole site, including these internal lots.
So the plat then, though, would represent those individual lots, right?
It would, yeah.
So we would need to look for those, right? And that becomes a part of the record.
It does, yep. In addition to easements that might be necessary between the lots for utilities and any other common infrastructure or common features for the project.
So it's an actual realty subdivision that's actually occurring, or...
I believe it's a non-real... So when we did this in 2020 for hiplofts, the county department of health did stamp the plat that was filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's office, and the stamp that they used was their non-realty subdivision stamp.
I see.
So they have two different kinds of approvals that they issue, one where you're requesting water and sewer connections, and one where it's a non-realty subdivision under the New York State Public Health Law.
So could, in the future, this separate building within the larger site be sold separately from everything else in the site?
Theoretically, I guess, like the financing, say they defaulted on the financing for the one lot, theoretically, the bank could take over that property, and it could be sold individually. However, there's still, it's still subject to the overall site plan approval, the overall resolution, the overall conditions, and all of those cross-easements and maintenance agreements for any common infrastructure.
So for example, if...
So the obligations still remain regardless of who the owner is.
Say, say, I think it was in the instance of hiplofts, you create somewhat of an island lot, if you will, and obviously easements are important in that case.
Right.
In that example you just gave, the bank could take back that one particular part of the lot that they refinanced and dispose of it, right, through sale?
Right.
So yeah, it sounds like it could get a little bit messy.
It could, and there, you know, John Russo raised a really good question earlier today, and that was, well, what about when you have water and sewer infrastructure crossing separate lots? We know that Dutchess County Department of Health doesn't permit common infrastructure to cross over lots when it's serving more than one lot. And I think that the answer there is, that's why the applicant had originally requested that this be a building department approval process, currently it's a planning board approval process. Any applicant seeking to utilize this provision has to come to you for approval, and all of those questions and issues would be vetted at that time. The answer, in some circumstances, might be no, might be no.
True.
No, or you need to first do a transportation corporation, or do some modifications to the utilities. So I think that all of these are really good questions. I don't know that we have the answers to each and every one of them. It might be something that needs to be addressed, kind of on a case-by-case basis, as an applicant comes before you.
Yeah, I think as long as there is a mechanism for through that review process, right?
And practically speaking, the one that we did in 2020 was the only one that I've seen since 2010, so it's not something that people are, you know...
It's not very common, yeah.
Knocking down the doors trying to utilize.
Well, to some degree, the developer, the owner, they've gotta understand the complexities to a greater degree, right? If they're imposing this on themselves, right, if they're electing to implement this on their site, there are a number of complexities, and there's also the chance, though, that as they go under review, that logistics and good planning just fly in the face of what they're looking to try to do, right?
Right.
So, sorry, did you have something?
Well, yeah, a couple of things. I mean, just preliminarily, I mean, your reference at the beginning of the present, of what you were saying to interest rates and financing likely have a fair amount to do with why we haven't really seen this invoked too much in recent years. Frankly, I had a couple of questions going in a couple of different directions, but first, just first of all, what is the actual history of this provision? I just, in the code, what I could see is this subpart 223-25 has been amended, I think, three times in 1993, and once again in 2003. Did we start out with the two-phase approval process in place, or was this something that was added later on? And how did we get to a point where the two-phase approval process only applies to non-residential buildings in the first place?
That's a good question that I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
I don't have the legislative history, yeah.
Somebody intentionally drew a line, and so the question is, why?
Yeah, I don't know. But that's a good question, and one that we can raise with the city council in your comments back, that they should explore what the history of the original adoption of this provision was.
Okay, the second thing I had, which is going in a somewhat different direction, and I'll apologize, I guess I'll apologize for being a lawyer, but one of the revisions in this that we haven't talked about, just it completely threw me for a loop, and I, so this subpart C is what governs these two-phase lot approvals, and within that, there's a sub-subpart III, and the First Amendment has to do with what we've been talking about, conforming language to go along with that. The second thing is striking this language, okay, the only way this makes sense is if I read the language that's there now and then say what's being taken out. So what it's saying is that once the first phase of approval has been granted, in some and substance, the applicant can subdivide the lot. It says, "The standards as referred to in subpart D, which is the basic subpart governing planning board approval in the first place, shall apply to the overall site area, whether or not the same is or will continue to be under one ownership, so long as all of such land is contiguous, with the exception of any streets or driveways." And what's being struck is, "So long as all of such land is contiguous," and what is the intention in doing that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the very same question.
Yeah, I wasn't part of the drafting of that particular provision, or the revisions, I should say. However, I think that what the intent is, is that to kind of streamline the language a little more. So it shall apply, the standards referred to in 223-17D, so all of your dimensional zoning standards, shall continue to apply to the overall site area, whether or not it's still under one ownership.
Right.
So that goes to the question that we were just talking about, what if the bank defaults and it goes, the ownership transfers?
Yeah, one ownership, yeah.
But this next language that's being struck, "So long as all of such land is contiguous, except for any streets or driveways separating the land." I think that the intent here is, regardless of whether it's contiguous or not, if it's all part of the same site area, all part of the same site plan approval, then the provisions of the zoning code, the dimensional provisions of the zoning code, should continue to apply as they did in the site plan approval. So rather than have this carve-out to potentially accept out whether the zoning regulations continue to apply the overall site area, we're saying, no, it should continue to apply to the overall site area regardless of any proviso about whether the land is contiguous, with the exception of streets, et cetera.
My reading of it...
I think it's more protective of the city, actually, to have this language with the strikeouts.
With the strikeout.
And that's all making sense, but what doesn't make sense is, so what you're saying that right now, if you somehow are doing some site plan where you're gonna subdivide, and after you subdivide, you're gonna have lots that are not, like maybe Fishkill Creek is running down the middle of it, I can't really think of anything else that would...
Or you create a street. Or separate, or separate, non-contiguous.
The planning board approval would no longer apply to that orphaned case of land.
Think of it this way, think of it this way, non-contiguous means separate, right? Not connected, right? So there is an instance where an owner could have a lot that they're subdividing into three parts, and look to apply this provision to parts, both parts on the side and not the middle one, therefore making it applicable to those two non-contiguous parcels.
Except it says, "All of such land is contiguous."
So what I'm saying is, in taking that out, it allows for what I just described to happen.
So the end result seems to make sense, but the beginning premise is so nonsensical, it makes me think we must not be interpreting this right in the first place, because I don't know why the city council...
It was a constraint.
Acting with council would...
It was a constraint, it was a constraint that is unnecessary.
You know, constraints are used to control, right? So it's kind of like, we don't want this to get out of hand, right?
Okay.
So they're taking away that particular constraint for, I can only imagine, the kind of instance I just described, where you have one owner, it's an acre lot, whatever, they decide to divide it up into multiple lots for the purpose, right? And that they want to apply then this provision to parcel A, parcel B, and they happen to be non-contiguous, this would take away that constraint.
Well, yeah, just like I said, because it's using that "all of such land is contiguous," even in that scenario where lots one and three no longer touch, "all of such land is contiguous," so, all right, so let's just leave it at, it seems like this gets rid of some nonsensical language that would lead to absurd results.
Yeah, that's my sense.
So then, the only other thing I wanted to say, 'cause I'm not trying to monopolize the conversation, but I think this is the big picture issue, the real change that we're talking about making here is, someone comes in, files a site plan for approval for a development, for whatever reason, decides, you know what, I wanna do this in phases, and this opens up a door for them to basically go back and say, okay, now I want to do this, instead of, as the whole kit and caboodle was originally planned, now I wanna do this in phases. What are the ramifications of making that change to our code?
Well, first of all, in order for them to do that, they need to come back to you. So you would have review and approval authority over that, and would be able to set whatever controls, conditions, et cetera, would need to be in place in order to allow that phasing, if it were to proceed as requested, to be done in a way that is still gonna be protective of the city, and making sure that the important elements of the project that the city is looking for, like any community benefits, let's say, like a greenway trail, right? To make sure that that greenway trail is still constructed at the beginning part of the project versus at the end because of a phasing, or never gets constructed. So you have, because they're coming back to you for review of this, you have control over setting conditions and restrictions for that.
I just think about potential requirements that would be applicable to an application reviewed in whole as opposed to phased, that wouldn't necessarily be required for the first phase, for example, but would if it were considered as a whole, when does the, and again, this is a hypothetical, right? When would the requirements, if, as if reviewed as a whole, kick in? Is it phase two, is it phase three, or how do we, how do we kind of gauge that? Do you follow what I'm saying?
I'm sorry. I think I lost you in the middle.
I'll try to, I'll try to make this, so say, a landowner or an owner's intent is to phase an approval, whether or not this mechanism, it could apply, 'cause I think there are precedents to our understanding, certain owners wanting to phase projects. So for example, if you were to take that, that application, the plans of that owner in toto, and there are certain provisions that would need to be met, right, requirements, I don't know what they would be, so that's why this is a hypothetical, based on the in toto review...
Yeah.
Is there, is there some sort of skirting of those requirements based on the fact that they're just coming for this phase?
I don't think so, because then, if it becomes a phased project, you would have the ability to say, to craft when those phases occur, and maybe there's some elements that the applicant is putting in phase four that you don't agree, you think that those elements should come up front at phase one or phase two. Like if there's, if you have a, let's say, a multifamily project, right, with three buildings, and maybe most of the affordable units are being proposed to be constructed in phase four.
That's a good example.
And you want, as the city, you want those affordable units to come online earlier than phase four, you want them in phase one or phase two.
Yeah.
So you would have the ability, as the applicant comes before you, to request this approval, to mold that. Now, I wanna go back for a second, 'cause this doesn't necessarily only apply in a phased project.
Yeah, I understood.
It could just be, you know, that they're constructing everything all at the same time, but they have different financing needs.
That, that totally understood, although I think the phasing part kind of comes in because we're talking about parcels within parcels, right?
Yeah.
It lends itself to that being, you know, sort of a logical next approach.
If there's not some phasing going on, I don't know why they'd wanna break, subject themselves to multiple reviews in front of the board anyway.
I think it's, yeah, again, I mean, I think an owner needs to be very cognizant of what it means for them in regards to the sequence of reviews, but there may be a benefit to them relative to the financing aspect, and that's, I think, kind of why this is being considered.
Your comment got me thinking about something, or developing a thought I kind of had a little more, and it's this. One scenario here that could be concerning would be if pertinent zoning or building code provisions have changed since the initial site plan review was granted on what now someone is seeking to subdivide and convert to phase. And the possibility that by jumping onto this provision and saying, "I've got vested rights under the prior scheme," we could basically get ourselves in a scenario, into a scenario we wouldn't want to be in.
That's a good question. I would imagine the review would be subject to the laws in place at the time of the review, so they couldn't necessarily make an argument for, oh, the original phase was approved under this old law, so therefore you must, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. This is going back into that whole, there's a legal standard about when changes to building and zoning codes are made, and it basically has to do with how far down the line you're going.
That's why you never have to apologize for being an attorney.
Typically foundations in the ground.
But now, on the other hand, to this tie directly into all of this, it might be worth considering adding language into here, saying that if someone, in substance, if someone is converting something that started out as a single-phase application into a multi-phase application, that it needs to be an application that, I don't know the exact word for the thing, but would have been approved under current guidelines or requirements.
Current codes, or laws, right?
Under the current code, because one thing that would do too, is that would, in this, that scenario we just laid out, I think one end result of that would be, the applicant would no longer be in a position to say that if they were moving to two-phase permitting, they now could rely on this, a reasonable expectation that prior statutory stuff would be in place, 'cause we've got that in writing right there.
Yeah, no, I think this is a very good point. I think something we wanna share with the council, yeah.
Yeah, I think something to make sure that they're thinking about that, I do think that the original site plan approval continues to apply, though, for the whole process.
Yeah, look at the two examples. Edgewater was approved as a project in whole, five buildings, but it was built in two phases.
Yes.
Three buildings first, two buildings later. So the zoning that was in place applies to all five buildings, the approvals for all five buildings. Mirbo, on the other hand, divided it into two phases, in which it was one constructed and improved, another one conceptually approved. If that comes back and they wanna do phase two, that would have to be under the current zoning, even if it's changed since phase one, because now they're doing a site plan amendment for the first phase. So the zoning is attached to whatever approval is, the type of project that it's set out to be in the beginning. So I don't think there's a real problem here.
Yep, there are several instances this can apply to, and you can think of hypotheticals for Creek Drive, for Edgewater, and the open lots that are on, that were just contemplated on Fishkill Avenue, right? What are the impact, and we should examine that, what's the impact of this change in law on future subdivisions and current subdivisions? There's an issue on Creek Drive where they have a commercial building that was required, and one of the questions I had was, does this allow them to subdivide and sell a parcel, right? And whose responsibility is it to complete that portion of the required, you know, what was required in the application?
It's kind of different.
So even if that were to, let me just say, even if that were to happen, the obligations
and the conditions on the original approval still apply regardless of who owns it.
What about the sequencing of the trails that are involved?
Still applies regardless of who...
I mean, that's an important thing, that's an important part of the public benefit.
Yeah, that's why, when you look at your resolutions, it doesn't apply, the resolution, obligations in the resolution don't apply just to the applicant, but it's the applicant and its successors and its signs. So that includes subsequent property owners.
Yeah, it's a bit of a different, it's a bit of a different scenario, but thanks for raising that, Kevin. But by what...
The application you're talking about, I was on the zoning board when that was in front of us, and there's actually a more specific reason for that, which is, in the FCD zoning code restrictions itself, there's an explicit condition saying that the CFO on the commercial space, or CFO will not be granted on commercial space until it's on the residential space. So this amendment would not impact that, because you've still got that express restriction there.
I mean, I just think it's important to explore in detail, or at least in the, as this proposed law affects it, and any of the potential developments and the existing developments, and how it would play out in a number of different scenarios, even besides what's contemplated or proposed by the applicants, and what the worst case is, and that sort of thing. It's important.
Can anyone think of a reason that would be, you know, a reason to deny such an application that might be, you know, not, you know, is there like a downside? And I guess, sometimes with these things, I'm like, okay, so what is the, you know, where are the teeth in this thing, where we can say, hey, we're denying this application because, you know, it doesn't meet these criteria?
The downside is, we don't think it's actually gonna get built the way it is expected under the zoning code. Somebody's gonna get halfway done with the project, run out of money, declare bankruptcy, whatever, and 10 years later, we've got a half-done project.
Yeah, that's somewhat out of our control.
That's what I was gonna say, that's... As soon as you start talking about finance, I'm like, no, no, that's something that we can't even get into. We don't ever seem to have any...
I think that's what this is trying to avoid.
Right, right.
But some of the arguments, of course, involve like, you know, complaining about financing, you know, and other things.
Is there any, is there any unforeseen scenario, for example, like where we have, say, a property that's got a, you know, a historic building, or a landmark building status, and there's an application to do an internal subdivision because of financing, and then somehow it ends up, you know, undermining the, you know, sort of the status of the building? I don't really, you know, I'm just trying to think of, how does this come back and bite us, and how do we say no to it when we sense that it's gonna happen, you know? Is there something, is there any kind of downside we can foresee with that?
It's hard to game out all of the potential, you know, unintended consequences and stuff like this, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think the other thing to remember, too, is, this law already exists on your books, right?
But it doesn't apply to residential.
It just doesn't apply to residential, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's...
Not to say that, you know, that that means the law should continue to exist, right?
Yeah, all the substantial projects are...
But it's been in place since 93.
But it's, yeah, it's been on your books for a long time.
And we've never had a real problem based on it, and alls he's doing is saying, why should it only be commercial? It was probably put in place because some commercial developer asked for it back in 1993, and they didn't take a hint to say, well, why wouldn't you do this for residential as well? Yeah, so I think, just in the interest of time, you make a valid point, it's something at least to point out to the council, just to consider, just in relationship to, you know, what have they thought through, whether, you know? And it sounds like there isn't a problem, it's just since we've had this robust discussion, let's share that observation.
The particular question being, is it something that would have been approved as a two-phased application if they were putting it in now? Is there, is there something, is there some reason, in other words, that, although I don't know, is, is there actually any, I guess that's kind of what Lynn was getting.
I think, I think what we're getting at is, is the question is, is there any, is there any potential mechanism for a phased project to fall under different requirements based on the timing of laws in place at the time? Something to that effect.
I think there was, in your presentation, there was also, I think I heard, an inference that there could be some kind of negotiation for a public benefit in considering something like this, but I don't see that there's anything in the law that would allow us.
Just to make sure, no.
No, I'm not, all I'm asking is what's already in your law? I'm not getting, there's no, no trading on this.
The community benefit that I referred to was if there's some, a community benefit, like a greenway trail in the original approval, and someone comes in and asks for this subdivision, we want to make sure that that greenway trail isn't going to get pushed to the back of the burner. That the, the obligations in the original site plan approval will remain, and that greenway trail will get constructed. That's just one example.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And then.
It's all going to be based on the, the sort of fortitude and, and, you know, of the, of the planning board to enforce it. I mean, there's nothing in the, nothing written in the law.
Yes, no, but the original approval remains, the site plan approval remains, and all of the obligations and all of the conditions remain.
Yeah, that, that's understood. The other, the other note is, I think, again, to, to your point, just, just a basis for understanding the history of the original law, for what it's worth. So I think, just again, in the interest of time, unless there's other, you know, real pressing comments on this, it's pretty straightforward. We did want to potentially talk about the draft law in terms of parking standards, but timing on that?
Well, I think it's, there's no time to talk about it tonight. What I would suggest is, we talked in the abstract about the idea of eliminating minimum parking standards and putting in maximum standards instead.
Yep.
So the council's asked me to do a first draft, so I've done that. If you want to look at it, it's in the November 6 city council agenda.
Are they, are they planning to potentially act on it? November 6? Oh, it's, so actually what you're saying, it's in.
Yeah, they've, they've looked at the first draft and made some comments. We're going to come back with a second draft. There's some questions.
Okay.
I'm not sure they're 100% sold on the idea, certain members, so it's nowhere near being adopted at this point.
Yeah, so that's why I asked the timing on it, not whether we have time tonight, but whether we have time.
Yeah, we can talk about it in December if you want.
That's great. So, thank you. Great, so we'll, we'll welcome everybody to our November 2023 meeting of the City of Beacon Planning Board. First item of business is to hear about any potential modifications to last month's meeting notes. If not, then I'll accept a motion to approve.
Motion.
Any, any modifications?
Oh, wait, wait, don't we, don't we want to make a motion to approve them with Jennifer's revisions?
I assume that was, that was part of the motion, but yeah, I did submit just two typos earlier today.
Oh, sure, yes, thank you. Again, never apologize for being an attorney. Covering all of your.
Motion to approve as amended?
As amended, yes. So we'll amend the motion to approve as amended, so motion by Karen, second?
Second.
Second by Kevin, was that Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll, we'll turn to our first agenda item, that being a public hearing on the application for site plan approval and special use permit, personal wireless service facility, 375 Washington Avenue. We'll first accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Karen, quicker than you. And then, just real quick, in relationship to some of the areas that we know, since we've, we've reviewed these types of applications before, that are sort of quote unquote, and for lack of a better term, off limits.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll get to that, and I just want to give a quick update.
Yeah, the summary.
Just on like where we are and where we've been on this application.
But we never had a vote on that motion, though.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Geez, Ken, thank you.
So this is an application for a wireless telecommunication facility at the Fairview Cemetery. It was originally submitted in April of this year. It's been on the planning board's agenda in May and October. The planning board retained an RF engineer to review the technical aspects of the project, William Johnson. He was at your meeting last, last month. His, all of his comments have been satisfied. He has checked, you know, whether the, the height of the proposed tower is the minimum necessary, and he's concluded that it is, based on the service that's needed to be, to be the, the gaps that are going to be serviced by this particular tower. And he also looked at the impact of decommissioning Mount Beacon. That was also studied as well. The applicant performed a visual assessment, doing a balloon test, and provided photographs to the board. That's all in the public record. The board discussed some alternative locations for the tower, whether galvanized steel is the appropriate color or material to make the tower the least visible as possible. And getting into the federal regulations, so as the board is aware, the, you know, applications for wireless telecommunication facilities are heavily regulated at the federal level. The planning board can review things like the location, visual impacts, but we cannot discuss anything related to alleged health effects or health impacts from wireless telecommunication facilities. That is regulated at the federal level only, and it's, it's not to be regulated at the local level. So to the extent anyone has concerns about health impacts related to the wireless telecommunication facilities, folks should speak to their US congressman, is the avenue of relief there, but not the city planning board, unfortunately. So with that, I'm sure the applicant is here and should provide a presentation to the board, and any public comment.
Yep, advocate with us. Oh, there you are, aye. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dave Brennan with the law firm, A Young Summer, out of Albany. I know Scott Olson from my office has been here previously, and he was double booked this evening, and I am here in his place. With me also tonight is Nate Keenan from Tectonic Engineering, and Martin Lavin, our RF radio frequency engineer. And I just would like to give a very brief overview of the project. I can talk about these things longer than you want to listen, and so I will keep it.
Please don't.
I will keep this short to, as an overview of why we're proposing this, what we're proposing to fill this service gap, and importantly, the, the public's here to speak and turn it over to them, so that I don't monopolize the evening. But very briefly speaking, and thank you to Jennifer for doing half my job roughly, but basically, this has been before the board for several meetings and sent out to the, the town's consultants. But Verizon Wireless of the East, or just called Verizon Wireless, is proposing a 120-foot tall monopole with a four-foot lightning rod at the top. The lightning rod is roughly the diameter of one of my fingers, depending, you know, about five-eighths or a half of an inch in diameter at the top. Below, at the, the top of the tower, will be a set of Verizon Wireless antennas. Roughly speaking, we put three sectors of antennas typically on, on sites, sometimes there's a fourth, but it's the panel antennas that you're used to seeing on, whether it's on a building or on a tower. The site is located, proposed to be located on the Fairview Cemetery at 375 Washington Avenue, and it's proposed to remedy a significant gap in, in service arising out of both the combination of the Mount Beacon site being decommissioned and capacity constraints with the Groveville site to the north. Amongst the materials we submitted was a balloon, the results of a balloon fly showing the areas of visibility, and of the roughly 36 photographs that were taken, there were six areas at a distance ranging from three-tenths of a mile to about nine-tenths of a mile. Those were Pineview Road at a half-mile to the east, Matteawan Road at nine-tenths of a mile to the northwest, and, and two other sites, photos 27 and 36 to the northwest and to the southwest, where there was some limited visibility at the, in the, in the distance. The site is set back a significant distance from all property lines. It's 311 feet to the property line to the north, 993 feet to the south, 992 to the west, and 185 to the east. Importantly, we're not proposing a backup emergency generator on many, but not all of our sites. We will propose a backup generator in this situation. One is not warranted, so we're not proposing a generator, and sometimes we're questioned about the noise associated with that sort of facility, but it's not being proposed. There also is no light proposed at the top of this tower at this particular height in this location, while sometimes a blinking light is necessary due to FAA regulations. In this particular circumstance, one is not proposed and is not required by the FAA. There is a small work light, work light proposed at the base of the tower in the unlikely situation that a work person has to go out in an emergency situation. It's on a spring-wound timer, will help illuminate the equipment, and if he or she forgets to turn it off, it'll wind itself down and shut off. It's not on a motion sensor or anything of that nature. We did also submit a radio frequency study from a New York State professional engineer indicating that at full strength, the tower's operation will be less than 1% of what the FCC allows for radio frequency propagation. And when I say at full strength, what I mean is, in Albany, I speak to Pix 106, the radio station that transmits at 50,000 watts, trying to reach Lake George. Cell towers operate differently. Basically, if I pull my phone out and make a call, I will connect with the dominant facility, that will turn on and connect back and forth to me, and those power levels fluctuate. If I start driving away, the power increases from the tower in my phone until you reach the limits, and it then hands off to the next. So when we run the RF safety analysis, we assume that, you know, Woodstock 2024 is happening in the cemetery, and there's 1,000 phones all operating at once, that every channel is at full strength, at full capacity, and even in that rare circumstance, we're at less than 1%. In reality, they don't operate like that. It's not like a radio station that's at full strength 24/7. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm just as happy to leave it at that, because the board's heard this and, you know, turn it over. If there's questions, I'll answer them, but otherwise, I turn it back over to the board.
Thank you. Yeah, so let's go to our consultants as far as their reviews and any outstanding items we want to bring to your attention. I'm sure obviously you've read the consultant's reviews, so let's just go through those. Mr. Clark?
We didn't receive any new material or responses to our previous comments, so all of these were dealt with to a certain degree in the last meeting verbally, but I wanted to get responses in writing on two of the points. One was that, I pointed out that there's a place along Fishkill Avenue, near State Street, where you have a really open view of the ridge line, and the city has considered designating that a scenic viewpoint. And I wanted to make sure that this tower was hopefully not visible from that spot. The nearest, closest balloon test site that they considered was on the Chemprin, Kemprin, I'm not sure, Kemprin driveway, and it's 20 feet higher. So it's likely that you can't see it from the State Street Route 52 intersection, but I wanted confirmation on that. From the maps, it doesn't look like it, but I just wanted them to say so in writing. The second point was that Mr. Will, Mr. Johnson raised the point about whether any additional towers or site are being planned with the Beacon area, so that we would know sort of what's next. And they answered that verbally, I sort of wanted them to put it in writing. So I ask those two questions again, and hopefully for the next meeting, we can get a written response to the comments.
Acknowledged. Understood. Great, thank you. Thank you, John. Mr. Russo?
I only had one remaining comment on one of the details, construction details.
Yeah, you did make a note about color, poll, right?
We had discussed that the last time around.
Yeah, we went through a pretty robust discussion on that as well. We landed on the galvanized.
Leaving it, yes.
Okay, so board, any questions of the applicant at this moment in time?
Why wasn't a generator warranted?
Typically, the reason for that is that when there's other existing sites, and also the nature of the area, the resiliency of the electrical grid. So when we get, if we're on a fire station or other municipal facility, we've always put a generator on. If we're up, and I do a lot of sites closer to the Canadian border, where they're spread out, and if one goes down, the whole network goes down, we will put a generator on it. But here, where there's redundant coverage, typically, there's not a generator put at every site, is the typical reason.
Is it power going to be above ground or below ground?
It's below ground. From wherever the current D-mark is, so, you know, out at the main road, or possibly someplace within this, I'd have to look at the plan, someplace within the cemetery, there may be a spot where we connect, but we would then run it underground to the site.
I had a question, actually, for John Clark. We received a letter from residents, and they're, in the letter, they pointed to a historic overlay issue with the cemetery. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, the cemetery's in the historic district, the landmark overlay district. There's nothing in that, there's no demolition proposed or anything that would change the historic quality of the cemetery itself. This is sort of removed from the cemetery, so I don't think that the HDL designation has much, you know, much influence on this application. That's primarily meant to preserve historic buildings and sites, and this is a historic site for the hoodstones and the layout of the rural cemetery.
And what about the viewshed from the historic site?
Well, they, the, it's far enough from the cemetery itself, in the tree line. Based on the balloon test, there's very minimal, and I don't think there's any from the cemetery itself, as I remember.
That's what I recall from looking at the viewshed mapping as well.
So the trees are enough of a screening from close up that you, it'll block the tower from the cemetery itself, and the topography is, you know, pretty up and down there.
Any other questions of the applicant or our consultants?
I just have a follow-on question for John's question about, you know, getting, getting a robust description of what else is planned within the City of Beacon in terms of additional towers, and does that include like a look ahead, like some years into the future, if, you know, sort of projections of demand change, how it might, you know, I, I do, I think if, if I understand your question correctly, which is that we want to get some sense of what else is coming. And so I agree with that, and I also would like to know if that kind of includes a look ahead at, well, here's what we think additional towers that would be needed right now, and then if in 15 years, demand for service increases or population increases, then, you know, it might even be, you know, there potentially could be even more of a need. I just want to get a handle on that.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant at our last meeting, as John mentioned, publicly stated, no current future plans, right? And so John's request was for that to be in writing. I think what you're alluding to, or at least, you know, getting at, is what criteria would trigger the need for another tower, and what's the likelihood, timing-wise? I don't know if you can anticipate that, or if you're, you know, the applicant's thinking about this particular new gap filler is going to cover, you know, for the rest of ad infinitum.
You know, I may call on Martin to elaborate, but basically Verizon is typically looking out at least 24 months in advance as we monitor the various data rates and usage of the existing facilities to see if something's approaching exhaust, you know, exhaustion, if you get a particular sector pointed into a, you know, heavy demand area, and that's becoming exhausted. It takes us. It takes us, you know, twenty-four months, I think, is starting to get to be too short sometimes worth of time to find, you know, identify the problem, find a site, do the due diligence on the site, lease it, do the plans, bring it to the municipal review process and get permits and construct it. So I think twenty-four months is a little short, but we're basically looking at least twenty-four months out in the future with respect to network need as we're planning. The fifteen years, I'll still be doing this in fifteen years, I think, but we're not planning that far out. It's usually, the build plan is a couple of years out that we're identifying things and then adding to it.
Let's reframe my question a tiny bit, then. So if I understood you correctly, you were saying that, you know, you're trying to look, like, a twenty-four-month look ahead, it seems like it's based on a minimum kind of turnaround time to get permits in place and get a new facility created if you need it, and that's based on an assessment of demand on the existing infrastructure. Are there, is there an assessment right now that says, okay, well, you know, here's a list of all the locations in Beacon, they are now all, if we put this new facility in, everything will be at forty percent demand, or is it already at seventy percent demand with this new facility? Or is it, do you have any sense of what the margin?
Yeah, I'm going to phone a friend because it's getting above the level that I can...
Martin Levin, C-Square Systems, on behalf of Verizon. Verizon's exact statement I have is, "The Hedgewood macro site is the last active project being worked in Beacon to replace the coverage gaps left from decommissioning the Mount Beacon site. With the Hedgewood site on air, Verizon will be able to evaluate any remaining network needs within Beacon and could result in additional projects, but there's nothing currently planned, no area identified that needs coverage, nothing in the process of site building right now." So there's no specific place to point to.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, but you can't characterize whether things are at, like, we put this new facility in, everything's good, but it's actually all at, like, eighty percent, you know, of its capacity, and so it's good for now, but, you know, or we put this new facility in and it's great, everything is at forty percent demand, we have plenty of room for growth, or not. I guess that's what I'm trying to do.
I think within that twenty-four-month timeframe, Verizon does not anticipate any new sites.
Yeah, two years.
But is there an analysis of the actual current demand load on the facilities in the vicinity?
In terms of current demand, this site should take care of offloading the Grovel site and not require any more assistance in handling that capacity.
So what you're saying is that the next time you'll check in on whether your current system with this new tower in place is meeting demand is within the next two years?
We'll test it as built to make sure it works as it's supposed to, and then they monitor traffic trends on every site in anticipation of any, to plan for future needs. Right now, they don't foresee anything coming in at that time.
So, okay, so you're saying that right now, with this new tower in place, what you just summarized is that you don't anticipate the potential for a need over the next two years?
It's not anticipated, no.
Yeah, however, in two years, there could be a need.
Certainly could, yes.
Mr. Johnson's report went into this some, but spinning, jumping off of that, is the Grovel site owned or leased, and if it's leased, how long is left on the lease? Just because it was pretty clear that meeting demand here was relying to a substantial extent on that site, so it...
So part of my job on occasion is, well, we have what we call Jeopardy sites, and they're basically within that same two-year window, and so as a site is approaching the end of its lease, and our typical leases, they've changed over time, roughly twenty-five years, a five-year term plus four- or five-year renewals. And so as we're coming up on, again, two, sometimes even three years before that twenty-five years is going to expire, we're reaching out to those landlords and seeking a renewal of that lease to keep it on air. So it's not our expectation that it will come down, but as we just saw, you know, sometimes it's out of our control and sites do come off the air and are decommissioned. So I apologize. I cover some sites down here for Mr. Olson. If we were up in Albany or Rensselaer Counties, I could probably tell you more off the top of my head, but without looking at that lease, it's hard to say, but it is, you know, everything is usually, every effort is made to keep them on air because of, you know, this exact sort of problem. It's much easier to pay the money and extend the lease than to have that lease terminate and go, okay, now we've got to find a new location to replace it. It happens on occasion, but more often than not, the money is spent and the time invested to extend that lease and keep it. You know, sometimes what you'll find, and it's probably a little bit, you know, more apt to happen here in the Hudson Valley rather than up in the Canadian border, is that there's development pressures, and so you may find yourself in a certain location where someone says, hey, the monthly rent versus the development potential of the parcel no longer works for me, and so we want to use that parcel for something else. I mean, that, in theory, could happen, but we forecast that out, we start talking to the landlords in advance and do everything we can to keep it on air, and if it's not going to happen, then we end up going through that same process of doing a site acquisition process and leasing new site.
Well, it seems like it would be good to find out when that lease is up, and just because in the context that we're sitting in with regard to what you're planning to do, I mean, to put it simply, you're talking about a two-year window. If something happens to that Grovel site, say, in five years, and for whatever reason, be it a local law change or an uncooperating landowner, you've got to relocate that site. It could all of a sudden be a situation where you've now got to do an additional tower, and the tower we're talking about putting in above the cemetery right now basically becomes surplusage, and that would kind of be an issue because, like, at a fundamental level, we're trading off some degree of loss of viewshed for having cell phones that work, so we don't want to trade off too much.
True. I guess the only thing is, if that were the case, that would mean that tower is coming down, and we would be looking somewhere in that general area, and I, and again, I apologize, I don't know these sites off the top of my head, but I thought that was in the next town to the north, so we would be looking largely, again, these don't work very effectively by putting it on the fringe and trying to transmit to head up two miles away. You basically need to be, the search area would be roughly in the same location as that existing tower, so it may, in theory, it could come down, but the replacement tower basically goes in the same general area. Otherwise, we're finding a different problem. We're not going to search, much like that site, Grovel is not serving this area of the city, the opposite will not work. This site will not serve effectively with one sector pointed to the north, to that area, and so we would end up searching and trying to replace one. So while one tower may come down, it would be replaced with another for no net gain.
Thank you. Anything else around the Board before we go to the public?
David, you wanted to know how, David, you wanted to know how long the lease was for that they have? So their lease agreement that they submitted is for five years with four additional five-year extensions.
I saw that. I meant the Grovel station, because all of these calculations about this is going to resolve issues where we have insufficient coverage, in particular in vehicles and cars and stuff, is relying on having that station there. So that's kind of the piece we don't have.
Yep. Okay, we'll bring this to the public. For those of you here with us tonight who have observations, comments, please step to the mic, share your name and address, and we typically, as a rule, like to limit comments to three minutes per, so please.
Hello. My name's Kristin Eloise. I live at thirteen Helen Court. We're in the Glendale Estates Row House community, which directly borders the cemetery, and in the maps that we looked at, it seems like this tower would be in this area, which is very close to our community, and we want to know exactly where this tower is proposed for because it's close, and it's close as far as property values, it's close as far as, I know we said we can't talk about health concerns, but it's a fact that it's a health concern for the residents, and we just want to know exactly how far it will be from our houses.
So, yeah, and so if that's all you have, we'll take that in, and we'll ask, hopefully they have material here able to display for the group here where exactly, so thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll take all comments first.
Good evening. Robert Pendley, twenty-eight Helen Court, which is Glendale Estates, which is directly behind the Fairview Cemetery. I've kind of looked over things briefly, and I'm just curious why the Mount Beacon site is being decommissioned. It seems like this tower is being erected to replace that, and I don't understand why you'd put a major tower so close to a large development of homes where there are children and things of that nature. So can anyone here in the Board answer that?
We'll ask the applicant to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Again, once we've taken in all comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And one other point I'd like to make, the National Association of Realtors did a study with the Georgia State University with regard to cell towers in Savannah near homes. They determined that there was a seven to nine percent depreciation in value of the homes, and that was regardless whether it was an upscale market or a downturn in the market. So you figure if you're looking at an eight percent downturn in your home value, you're losing, just on average, I'll give you some numbers, for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you're going to lose twenty-four K. For a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you're going to lose thirty-two thousand. So, you know, this could have some ramifications on whether you want to challenge your tax rule or your appraised value of your home, so just thought I'd bring that to the attention.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jenna Gottlieb, and I'm also at thirty-eight Helen Court, so I'm part of the association as well. I'm very concerned about this, obviously, from a property value side. I'm also concerned from someone who works from home, that deconstruction of this will be very detrimental to my being able to work. Verizon installed FiOS, and they did it quite carelessly when they did that, so I don't have a lot of confidence that installing this antenna will really do anything or be done correctly. And again, just for all of us, I think we all feel a little taken aback by how close it's going to be to our homes and what the ramifications are going to be for that financially. I know, again, can't talk about it health-wise, but we do have to acknowledge that elephant in the room, and just making sure it's being done correctly and efficiently this time around.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Longo. I'm also at thirty-eight Helen Court. Hello, neighbors. I moved to Beacon in the summer, in the summer of 2020, in the middle of the pandemic. My better half, who just spoke, she told me on our third date that we were going to move to Beacon one day, and when we did move here, I fell in love with the town. It's a beautiful place, and it struck me as a place that prioritizes people and the environment and health over profits. So I hope we can live up to that. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Lockett. I live at three-eighty Washington Avenue, directly across from the cemetery. Forgive me, but I left my glasses at home, so I'm going to have to enlarge my comments as we go. The balloon test was done in July, when the trees are in full bloom. I just want to make sure that now that all of the leaves have fallen, that either we retest that or confirm that it doesn't matter whether the trees are in bloom or not, because as of a month ago, I couldn't see through the trees across the street from me to the upper level of the cemetery. In the winter, I can. No backup generator, that's great. The pole boxes that are mentioned in the proposal, which will be installed every five-hundred feet along the main road leading up to the tower, currently, there are no poles there, there's no power lines within the cemetery. How will these pole boxes be installed? Will there be additional structures that have these pole boxes? Will they be on the ground? So that's a concern. Also, the fiber and power are being ran underground down to the proposed location, which is Liberty and Washington intersect, right where the gate is to enter the cemetery. So there is already a Verizon box that has been installed sometime in the last year there. A lot of work has been done along Washington Avenue by Verizon, but how will that affect the aesthetics of that box? Will it be modified? Will it be enlarged? Are there going to be additional structures at the entrance of the cemetery there between, at the intersect of Washington and Liberty? And just for everyone's knowledge, I've lived there for five years, and I've never had a problem with my cellphone dying, dropping calls, missed calls, or anything of the like. So I understand the need to take the load from another tower, but also I think it's almost under a false pretense that it's to cover our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa Craft, Liberty Street. Yep, it's a catch-22 that I read my comment off this toxic tool. I've lived close to this proposed wireless service facility on Washington Avenue as a resident of Beacon and the neighborhood, and I've been following this and similar proposals. We are continually told that utility companies override home rule. The number of these cell towers and personal wireless service facility locations will only multiply in volume throughout the city with no hope of hiding them all. Antennas of all sizes are the new plague ruining our streetscapes. I don't believe Verizon is the only corporation in the game putting in these types of facilities in Hudson Valley. I object to granting this site plan approval and special use permit requested by Verizon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Crystal Rodriguez. I live at four-ninety Washington Avenue. In all the pictures of sightline visibility, nothing was done from Washington Avenue and Helen Court. What will be the visibility there? And the other question is, when you're putting up new towers, why are you decommissioning others instead of refurbishing them to suit your needs? Because that'll just be something that just rots and falls on its own. I'd like to know why that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the applicant, you heard a couple of questions from the public, one having to do with the decommissioning. I know we covered this, but just for their benefit of decommissioning of the tower on Mount Beacon, if you wanted to explain that. There's a question about why the location, if you maybe want to address that, and then describe the pole boxes. So again, this is just your opportunity, if you'd like to do it.
Sure. I'm happy to answer. I took notes, and we'll try to answer as many questions, and if I miss one, please remind me, and I will try to go back to it. You just mentioned that the pole boxes, the pole boxes are the ground-level fiberglass, probably not even as big as this desktop that sits two inches above the ground, and basically, when you pull cables from the existing utility pole at the front of the cemetery, you can only pull cable so far before you have to splice it, or the friction becomes too much in the conduit. So at curve... So at curves in every 500 foot, feet, there is a pole box. It's, you know, about as tall as the grass is high. So there's, there's no visual intrusion from there.
Rough, they're rough dimensions?
I could try to find it on the plans. I would say 18 inches by 12 inches, maybe. They probably vary a little bit depending on how much you're trying to put in them. I don't know if we have a detail on that. Yes, a green fiberglass.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with them. I'm asking more for general. Yeah, and then forgive me, the other, the other one was where, the location exactly? Again, we have all of this material? I don't, and of course it's all-
I do have my laptop, and I can try to plug it in and put it up on the screen if that is, is something that will work.
Well, we could either do, we could do it either way. Because again, for the public, all of this material is publicly available online. So you're, so again, the question, if we had the ability to, and it's up to you, we certainly have-
I'm in no hurry to leave, and I'm happy to try to put it up. If it's, if the system will work, I'd be happy to put it up.
Well, that's the, that's the caveat. Sometimes it doesn't. So again, just for everybody here, all of this material in terms of the application, the review material that we've all spent time with, everything that would describe the specific location, all the studies, all the engineer reports, that's all available to you online. So and in this instance, thank you to the applicant for taking the time to-
I will, as I log in quickly, try to answer a couple of other questions.
Yeah, please. Oh, yeah. That's a good one. Yeah. The other, the other question we'll add to your list is timing on construction.
Sorry to add to the list, but also the, the leaf-off condition. I know we spoke about that at the last planning board meeting, the leaf-on versus leaf-off condition.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That would have never happened if it was just me. So what I'll do is I'll first, first put up the, the drawing set. And I got to toggle between my glasses and my, not glasses. So the Helen Court neighborhood is here. This is Washington Avenue here. I apologize, I can't use my glasses with and without. And then the main part of the cemetery is here. The tower is right about here, and that is 311 feet from the center of the tower to the rear property line on Helen Court. It is 992 feet from the tower to the front of the cemetery. It's 993 feet from the, the tower to the edge of the property this way, and 185 feet to the east. What I will do is toggle back. One of the questions was about visibility, and so we do have, we do have the viewshed mapping. And so the, the red is, so again, here's the site in the middle. Helen Court's above it to the north. The, the red area is, is what is, where there's no visibility due to topography. So basically, there's, I would say, a ridge line here, and just by virtual, there was no grass, no trees if you're standing over here. Because of the topography change, you can't see the tower. The, the yellow is because of both topography and vegetation and existing structures, you can't see it. So the visibility that was identified was in this area to the southeast and a little bit to the northwest. I can go through, there were four pictures of the 30-ish that were taken, but there was no visibility identified from Helen Court because of the topography change that went up in the tree line that was right behind the homes. The other questions I heard, one was about, I, I took it as an, what's the impact during construction? We typically say that construction lasts between two months and three months. It varies in stages. Basically, we'll go in and cut in the road and put the utilities in and pour the concrete pad. That concrete pad has to cure, and then the tower is, is brought in. At this site, it's probably two pieces, maybe three pieces of steel, and a crane stacks those. The antennas go up, and then the fence goes around the bottom. But it's a pretty limited amount of construction. They pour concrete, stack it, and at that distance, I would expect that the, it's not 24/7 like building a house with the nail guns going on, on the roof when your neighbor does a construction project at this distance. The, the property value issue, I can appreciate the concern. My response would be for, at this distance from the homes, and particularly those folks that are speaking tonight from Helen Court where there's no visibility, my, my position would be there's no impact on home values when there's, when there's no visibility. We do have studies that show, and that we've run the analysis where there's existing homes, there's a tower that goes up, and then what's the impact on those homes in upstate New York? And what we've seen is there's not been a negative impact when there is actual visibility through the tower. Basically, the appraisers have gone out, valued the homes, valued the sales after the tower went up, and then applied the percentage increase that the property values increased, and then found no decrease in those property values. But again, because we're fortunately positioned where there is no view of this tower from those homes, that this will not be an issue. There was a comment that the cell phones work. There is an element of that. In this day and age, you know, our phones work. We're not on the Canadian border in the middle of the Adirondacks where they don't work, but there is a site that's being decommissioned that's out of our hands. It's an SBA tower that apparently they can no longer keep the lease.
So that addresses one of the questions.
So SBA is a, is a national tower company. There's about three or four national tower companies. They sometimes buy towers from the carriers, or they put them up themselves. This particular site is a company called SBA, and they are in a position where they're, the tower's at the end of its lease life, and they were not able to extend the life, and they're being told to take it down. And so we're, that's why it's being decommissioned. It's not that it's, can't be, excuse me, rebuilt. It's that they don't have the lease, so they're being, it's not Verizon's towers that do that, it's SBA's and their-
They're taking it down. Yeah, understood. Got it. Okay. Yeah, I think just for the record and for, you know,
Sure.
To answer the question, right? So to understand what's behind some of the moves here, yeah, would be helpful.
I'm sorry. If that SBA tower was to remain in service, would that obviate the need for the new tower?
Would it obviate the need for the new tower?
Well, it's, it's kind of moot because it's a hypothetical, right? Meaning you don't have the opportunity to renew that site there, so.
And you can't, I mean, I, this is, I'm just going to throw this one out there. You can't, Verizon can't make a decision to purchase that tower. So the situation right now is Verizon doesn't own the tower. SBA owns the tower. They've determined the tower is out of its service life, so they're not going to continue using it or maintain. We don't know what's going to happen to it, but it's going to be deemed unusable by them. So Verizon has to come off that tower, which is creating the need to construct a tower.
My understanding from the previous presentation was that the Mount Beacon Tower did not provide adequate coverage, and this would provide better coverage. That they're moving away from these big mountaintop facilities and going into more targeted facilities that have better reception and are not blocked by topography and that sort of thing. That's my understanding of the previous argument, but I may be misstating it because I'm not an expert.
I am unfortunately stuck with coming down six months into the process and not having the benefit of all those discussions, so I apologize for that.
I think having the tower closer to the focus area-
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, you need, if you're going to comment, then, yeah, we need you on the record.
Yeah, so not far from here, but my understanding is also providing a tower closer to the focus area of Beacon, City Beacon, is better than being way above mine. So why the decommissioning can provide that, but also becoming closer to Beacon.
So it's a, it's a lucky coincidence that that's not available anymore. It just so happens that you wouldn't have considered that an advantageous spot anyway now. So here we are. Okay, I understand. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, thanks. I, I just think it's important for public, the public to know that it's not really an option, because otherwise I think people are like, well, why don't we just keep Mount Beacon somehow? Well, first of all, Verizon doesn't own it. Second of all, it's probably, it's, it doesn't seem like it's the solution to the coverage issue anyhow.
Yep.
So I think it's just good to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
There was the, the leaf coverage issue. How much of the-
Foliage, yeah.
Yeah, how much of the, like, blocking is-
Change in visibility during the town.
Yeah, is due to foliage versus actual-
I will have to respond in writing to that and see what the-
Yeah, again, we, we also have the benefit of having been here last month. When your colleague was here, we discussed that in detail. So again, that has been discussed, it has been reviewed. For anybody here who had that question, you can go back to the record because, and again, you're, you're asking us to rely on recall, so forgive me. The, the understanding is that the density even with leaves down of the, I don't know if you call it a forest, it sounds a little too big for what, what we're looking at, but, but through the growth was dense enough to provide a level of screening even without leaves. That's my recollection of the conversation.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I actually reviewed the video from last meeting, because I, I also wasn't at the last meeting. My colleague Judson Seibert was here. So I did review the, the video of the last meeting, and what was discussed was very similar to what Chairman just, just mentioned, that with a leaf-off condition, you still have the trunks of the trees and the branches, and because this is not a, a building, it's, you know, it's a tower, it's a stick, that the tree trunks and the branches, you know, provide some level of visual mitigation, even in the leaf-off condition.
It doesn't mean that this thing is invisible.
Right.
Right? And it doesn't mean that if you're, you know, looking for it, you might actually catch a glimpse of it. It's there. So, and the idea isn't that this absolutely must remain invisible to everybody at all times. It's just impossible. That's an unrealistic expectation. So the goal here is to have, and again, the analysis, the studies, the balloon tests was to test views from various locations, and there was a detailed review of that at last meeting, to a level of understanding that this is as least viewable from quite a number of, and I think, again, it was some 38 to have it right, 38 locations tested as you could possibly make something like this. So again, there may be a possibility sometime you catch a glimpse of it, but that's, again, making this invisible was not the, the goal of the charge, so.
There was one more question.
Yeah.
Was, there's a quick, the boxes that are currently at the entrance into the cemetery, is there anticipated to be more boxes, bigger boxes? What's the change anticipated?
I can see from the plans, there is an existing national grid or 911.
So, yeah, so from Washington Ave, there's an existing pole which utilities would be pulled from. That, there's another, so from, from Washington Ave, right? And then it's going to go underground, following up the road and look to the sun. So working utilities off, pull from Washington Ave, fiber and power, underground utilities, pole boxes, and again, we don't, you know, we're assuming just our drawings and our detail until we get up to Central Hudson, you know, for sure, or like this, or thinking it's going to be that.
So the transformer for these sites, to answer the question differently, typically the pole, there's an existing pole, there's a drop down the side pole, the cable that goes probably into a hand box there, and it goes into the conduit up to the site. And then at the site, there is a transformer, typically, I'm trying to think, it's just outside the fence or just inside the fence, it's immaterial, a meter, a meter box. So the, the real piece of equipment is the transformer, which is a, a medium-sized transformer, probably roughly the size of this, this podium on its side, you know, a smaller one. So I would not expect a significant change in that pole, although another pole proposed. Again, typically, they drop off that pole and go down. It looks like there's overhead utilities up and down Washington Ave as it exists, and so that's where we all, you know, gave our power. I apologize, I said, have it national grid instead of utility company. But we'll be hooking up that, not installing the pole going around from that. Oh, I apologize. I'm saying that from the existing pole, we would be going down in typically like a U-channel down the pole to the ground. There may have to be a, a pole box at the base of the pole to connect that, that drop cable to the underground cables and conduits. And then from there, it would go underground in a conduit feed. And then basically, when they put the conduits in, they string them so they can pull the cable, and that is limited to roughly 500 feet. The actual design will be finalized during the construction phase with the utility. And then basically, particularly on sharp bends, and every, you know, 150, 500 feet, there'll be a pole box so that the cable can be spliced until it gets up to the tower.
Got it.
And that transformer you just mentioned, is at the base of the tower itself?
It's at the base of the tower. I apologize, I'm trying to find the plans.
That's okay.
I know the, the meter is outside the fence because they can't read the meter if it's inside the fence, and just looking to see if the transformer, regardless of-
Transformers outside the fence also.
Quickly as I speak, it's, I know the meter's outside.
Because I think the intent of that question was probably from a resident living across the street from the, the existing pole, and they were probably asking whether there was going to be a proliferation of boxes right at that street location. But it sounds like no. It sounds like just a small pole box at the foot of the pole where the cable comes, the power, and goes underground and then proceeds up underground to the cemetery.
That is my belief, absolutely. That being said, we don't control the, the utilities, and that is, the expectation would be a drop down to the ground and then underground all the way up.
Great. Thank you. Did you have something?
No, I'm, since there's a few sort of loose-end explanations, perhaps we should keep the public hearing open.
That was exactly what I was going to suggest.
And, and ask for these comments to be addressed in writing? And then, and then they can be handled at the next meeting?
Yeah. We can, we can authorize draft after discussion around the board, so if we think we're ready. But I'm, I'm in agreement with you, I think, and we can talk about it around the board. It's a good idea to keep the public hearing open. We can certainly authorize drafts, review that at our next meeting, take in any other public comments, and then see where we go from there.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I appreciate that. I certainly didn't come down expecting a, a decision at a, a public hearing when we're here at the comments for the first time.
Sure.
I sit at the other side of the table, I wouldn't expect my board to do that, I wouldn't ask you, and so my expectation is to hear the public comment, get an opportunity to respond in writing for the record.
Great.
And come back and visit you in, in December at your next meeting.
Awesome.
And if it's not me, I appreciate the time this evening.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
So we can discuss authorizing Jennifer's office to draft resolution for our review amongst further public comments at next meeting, so any thoughts on that, Board? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to authorize draft for next month's review.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
I'll second the motion to do a draft resolution while we...
Yeah, great. So, second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Great, so that concludes our agenda for regular business.
And just to clarify, the public hearing is gonna remain open for your next meeting of December 12th, right?
Yeah, we said that like three times.
Just making sure it's clear for the record and we have the date.
Second Tuesday.
The 12th.
Second Tuesday.
The 12th, yes.
So we move then to architectural review. We have a few miscellaneous business which we will get to, but architect, excuse me, architectural review certificate of appropriateness, 45 Townsend Street facade, is that applicant here?
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night. Hey, I think this is the first 8:30.
No.
No? It's not? No, alright. I should've placed a bet. Hi, good evening.
So can we work examples for all the, the ability to proceed from that?
Yep. Yeah, that's great.
How much do you justice to the side?
Yeah, I can tell, I could, it says black, and I could tell it was black by your rendering, and it looks like you've confirmed that it's black. I have just one major question. Why black?
And the homeowner?
The homeowner requested black. They really love black.
So would, would staying colored be a reason?
Yeah, and then, my other question, Karen pointed it out, is the shutters. What's going on with the shutters? Are those, so, I understand this is a rendering.
So it's a pipe-on wood grain.
So you're, you're, you're looking to replicate the grain in your rendering here?
It's a stain.
Yeah.
So doesn't it do justice to what went on? It's a medium brown stain.
Can I ask, so does the, no.
No, I think, don't assume.
John, what's your opinion on these, the proportion of these shutters?
I just wonder if you close them during a storm.
Thank you. I was, I was gonna address that while being less of a wise ass, but, you know, you understand the whole purpose of a shutter, right? It's to, when a storm comes, you close them and you're able to, you know, get some protection. I, I get it.
I have one.
But I think, I get it. So to, to the sensibility of, and I may be speaking for my board members, all of them, but to the sensibilities of just about everyone on this board, shutters that aren't shutters look ridiculous. So my question to you is, is the owner really in love with and married to these shutters? Because if, if they're not, we might make the recommendation, they should just take them off.
No, I think that in this particular line, was very concerned about the exterior of his house, more so than the interior.
He did a lot of research and a lot of...
So you're saying he wants the shutters?
Yeah, he wanted, this needs are based on...
John, we'll let you keep them if you swear to call them moldings and not shutters.
Yeah, they're not, they're just not shutters. They're, they're, they're...
Yeah, they're decorative.
Relics, artifacts, decorative artifacts.
You want to maybe do a house without shutters?
I know, look.
Do we do or...
You got it, you have a bunch of designers in these seats up here, so it's something we, it's like, you'll always hear me talk about Changeling Frank Defense when it comes up. Shutters is another one of them, it's just, it doesn't, just...
Shutters should look like they fit the window, even if they're non-functional. These are out of proportion with the windows themselves, that's the problem.
Yeah, they're really weak, weak, empty jesters towards a history that we no longer live in, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, and, you can go, you can perhaps find us a wire.
I think that that would be a very nice compromise, and I think we're gonna ask you to do that, and we'll, we'll require you to do that since you said you would, so thank you.
The, the visual function that shutters do, and why people choose them over a, a blank facade with punched-out windows, which look very modern, is they provide a little bit of edge, it softens the edge of an opening. There's ways to do that with trim, right? And like top and bottom trim, and soffits and other things.
Client likes the shutters.
Same.
And I get it, we all get it.
I'm just telling you, if you put up shutters like that, yeah.
More work here, more wax.
Yeah, you're gonna have to listen to us.
Well, you, thank you, John.
John doesn't have to listen.
That's the purest definition of skeedaddle I've ever seen.
Can we discuss the roof color? Does it need to be pitch black? Could, there's a charcoal option, would they consider...
Yeah, I just think that the, yeah, the entire house is black, except for the shutters. So, look.
Well, I didn't know, when in sunlight, different, this is not gonna show it, pure black, it's gonna be, we've got some low tones and some gray.
Hopefully the UV fades quickly.
Faces to look purple.
That's the first floor, right? And then it's more than that and above.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've, so we have more than that.
Oh my goodness, excuse me. Okay, yeah, no, the best we can do is make some suggestions that we think would be a little bit more aesthetically comfortable.
Now, John, what would it take for us to not deny an application like this, if it really was in our opinion?
Can't.
You can't.
Okay. We can, we can make some very strong, luciferous recommendations.
So, condition of the contract is that he can walk it if what he wants, I mean, there may be some leap right now, but he will walk it if he doesn't get, generally speaking...
Yeah, we're not asking you to redesign the entire house, so, and again, we're asking questions about, you know, things that we care about, because we live here too, and we gotta look at stuff, right? So we have to live in this environment. So to the best of our ability, we'd like to, at least in part, again, you've got, I don't know how many, a hundred years of design expertise sitting at this table here, so, right?
Speak for yourself.
How does this fit into the rest of the neighborhood? I mean, it's, this is just big, and, big and...
So the rest of the neighborhood, I mean, it's, it's owing up now on the street, you should go through.
I, I will, I will.
There are a mix here, a lot of them have the dark siding, so not, not entirely dark, but there's dark and there's some light. We have two pretty houses up.
Yeah, we, we were fine with the modifications that you'd presented before. I thought that there was a range of colors.
Right, this is the first time we're coming in with an actual customer.
Yeah, who wants a black house.
Okay.
The, the earlier houses, they were our houses, we were moving them on spec, basically. So now we have a customer who is not only...
They were in recently with a...
Okay. Made some requests, but they're specific.
Right, and I hope, I hope you don't think we're rude or anything about all this.
So I'm in a, I'm, you're kind of in a bind because he's, we took weeks for him to do the research, and he would've been in the...
Did you, did you tell him that the planning board are a tough crowd?
You don't wanna know what I told him. I mean, we said it subjectively, we said that it was subjectively a structural...
Look, again...
That's why it's a condition of fact.
I get it, your client, and your sale is contingent, somewhat contingent by what I'm hearing on him getting a black house, because that's what he wants. Look, we can't tell you no, we'll just convey our collective design wisdom that, you know, black is pretty depressing, but it can be changed. Okay? The shutters, again, I think just getting yourself off to the right start in terms of creating an environment for others. If you can consider a wider shutter, please do. Other than that, any other questions or comments on the black house? The black house up on Townsend Street? Sounds like a novel.
No.
So we're gonna, we're gonna accept a motion to approve with the agreement by the applicant that they're gonna install wider shutters. And so do they come in standard sizes, standard widths?
I'm not sure, this is, what we were proposing here was a pipe-on wood grain shutter.
How wide?
I don't know, I don't know, we haven't done a pipe-on shutter, so I don't know what widths they are, but, but if that's not available, we'll...
The client specifically wanted shutters, like they wouldn't accept some kind of natural wood trim or a different option instead of a shutter?
There's a 24-inch pipe-on shutter.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we could, we could, we could...
It requires like a design...
There is a 24-inch wide pipe-on shutter available.
I mean, it's, even if you go slightly wider, it's gonna look like it could cover one pane.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, so it doesn't really, I mean, I...
Minimum 24, please.
But scale, just given the scale, it'll help.
Yeah, agree. I think in, in all of these locations...
Is that the widest area, Karen?
I'm looking.
Look, you got the planning board doing your research for you now.
Maybe you could present it to your client, though, and say, hey, the planning board said, we'd like to either see a wider shutter or something creative with a, a trim.
I don't think you've done that, I don't think, I don't think we'll represent it here necessarily.
12, 18, or 24.
What's the color, who wants a shutter?
Yep.
We can go, I don't...
Let's go minimum 24 on the shutter. And there is no maximum, right? Because it's as big as they come. Well, hold on, you haven't gotten to the fun part yet.
Is there a question?
So we were in the middle of forming a motion to approve. Do we have Mercedes, do you have at least the motion to approve on the condition that the shutters are a minimum of 24 inches wide? Great. So any other specifics we wanna roll into this motion, Board? All right, with that one specific condition, motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Karen. Nobody wants to second it?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome.
We'll send you a bill.
Okay, so we move now to our next agenda item, and this is to consider a request for a six-month extension of this, and you came all the way down here for this.
Wow.
This, this must mean a lot, oh, still, this must mean a lot to you. This is to consider a request for a six-month extension of special permit, Mayor Bowen and Spa, 7 Craig House Lane, and since you're here, brief 30 seconds, yeah, what's going on, man? Brief 30 seconds on, I, we, I'm sure we all understand, right, some of the logistics, yeah.
Since the approval last December, we spent about seven months in building design, you know, primarily the outside was done.
Yep.
The inside, the inside. And architectural details, mechanical system, structural work.
Lot of work.
Structural work, building mansion, and that finished at the end of June, and then we gave it to the construction manager in Singapore. And since then, we've been working on pricing, so we're going through VE exercises.
I was gonna say, the first thing you said, when you said pricing, was, I bet you're doing a lot of VE.
A lot, yeah, I mean, there is, it's so challenging right now in terms of material delivery, material pricing.
Cost of materials.
You know, electrical panel, taking a year to get, it used to be eight semis.
Yep.
So, which impacts the schedule as well, which impacts the financing. So that's what we've been struggling. So we're getting very close, but we wanted to make certain our calendar was in order. And so I think it expired in special use permit. There's nothing on the site that approved prior to the resolution, but it's just done in special.
Yep, no, understood.
Which is a year, and, yeah, so we just thought we were cutting it too close, which is why we asked.
We want six months.
Extension. You know, we hope to start a basement in January, and we've got about three or four months of a basement in that push, and then new construction will start in late spring.
Yeah, great.
It's roughly our schedule, and open in fall of '25.
Fall of '25.
That's, that's where we're at.
All right.
We spent a lot of time with New York State Ship Hall and the mansion, restoration requirements, it's been challenging, things like putting storm windows on the inside of those windows because we can't put on the outside, so there's a lot of architectural consideration.
Well, we appreciate you making the special trip for this request and for the update. Thank you. Motion to approve, Board?
Motion.
Motion by Kevin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen and Len. Let's do Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Good to see you, thank you.
We've also, I'm sure, we've just told from the door, we applied for...
Yeah, we heard, yeah, that's fantastic, that's a big milestone, too.
Pick that up in the morning.
Yeah, he's got, his job cut out for him now. How, how big is the set?
It's, it's, there's about four, four good sized halls.
Yeah.
I think there's 300 sheets of plants.
Yep, that sounds about right.
The finders.
Good.
Good luck with that.
It's a bedtime reading for him. Thank you. Next item under miscellaneous business would be the final review of the proposed brick for Two Cross Street submitted by Hudson Todd. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Austin Harris. Great to see you, we're recording, it's been a while.
You, you know, you don't have to suck up to us. It's very nice to see you too.
Very, very nice, but it's a pretty busy process. So, what we're presenting here is the final brick that we're proposing for Two, Two Cross. The size of the brick is not represented in the mock-up, it's gonna be a Roman, Roman brick, it's two inches, 12 inches, and four inches.
So, wait, what? So it's not what you've gotten in the mock-up?
No, it's, well, I mean, it's, the, the mockup's for the color.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so...
Because you had told us all along you were looking for that.
Right.
And the proportion, yeah.
Yeah, so, so two by 12 by...
Four.
So it's, it's full dimension?
Yeah, it's, it's a full dimension, it's not a side base brick.
Wow, okay. So most importantly, though, appreciate you bringing the board, but with that type of pattern, you, you better be using a different joint.
A different joint thickness.
Yeah. What's your joint thickness?
It's gonna be, it's thinner than this joint, because we want the bricks to really...
Because that looks like a 3/8, right?
Right, right, it's gonna be a lot thicker than this.
So you're going 8?
It's gonna be an hour.
I don't know, that's, that's possible.
But you're gonna go tighter joint?
Yes, for sure.
So you're just, you're...
We wanted to read more than the...
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Okay, so this is simply for color?
Just for color.
And you brought it under the most incredible lighting conditions?
We could've done this in the daytime, at that time.
Yeah, I mean, is it...
But the majesty color of 172, it's the same code, it's just a different finish, 172 is more of a sandier finish, this one's a smoother finish.
And that's the finish you're looking for?
Yes.
I was curious what manufacturer you ended on.
It's Anbel.
Oh, it is? Okay, great, so you'll be able to get it and everything?
Yeah, that's, that's the other...
That's the big thing. You didn't wanna ship it from Europe.
Breaks them off.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just...
No, no, I mean, it's...
Get used to it. Yeah, I totally get it, yes.
Yeah, just, I, I don't know if it's in your detail drawing somewhere, I mean...
I don't, I don't think I've got, I don't have any plans yet for this.
Yeah, okay, so...
But, I mean, obviously you're okay with the size, with the...
But, I mean, obviously, you're okay with the size, with the brick?
Okay with the size, okay with the color, just pay close attention to his joint thickness. Yeah, don't play any games, don't play any games with us.
No, 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 it's, it's really-
I know.
So, are you saying yours, it's a thinner joint, is it deep struck, or is it, or is it flush?
No, it's gonna be a little bit deep struck.
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit deep struck.
Okay, yeah, that'll be nice.
Yep.
You think it's, uh- Uh, the, uh, Masons should shoot you for a 12-inch vertical module with six bricks, just like with a, with a, a normal, uh, modular brick, which is nominally two and 3/8, 2 and 1/8, 4 and 4 by, uh, by 7 and 1/8, so that gives, 3 gives you 8 inches, and that's one plus a joint gives you an inch, so it allows you to do predictable modules.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
So, the user is intended to do 12 by 12.
What's, so, okay, again, what's the resulting joint width, that's all? Yeah. Which is, uh- No.
Uh, but it's, it, it's a, uh, if we, if we don't go with the, then it gives you 12, it's requires a, uh-
Yeah, I know, I've laid out brick patterns, it's no fun. I mean, I'm not a bricklayer, but having, having to try to draw them accurately is, yeah, I get it.
I, I don't think a super thin joint is required, myself.
I don't think, I don't think super thin, but just not that.
Right, no, that-
Once it's in shadow?
I think the depth as well.
Right, well, that's part, that's just a technique thing.
Yeah.
And it's, I, I think that'll accentuate the proportions of the brick, and I think that's, that's gonna help you get the expression you want, to have it struck like that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? So, we're gonna, so, yeah, we're gonna then make a motion to approve the color. Is that what, what do you mean?
Color, you're following, color, texture?
Color, texture, and brick dimensions. Right, yeah, okay. And then, yeah, the resultant joint dimension hopefully is less than what you're showing here.
The Roman brick, it says it's 1 and 5/8 by, um-
Yeah, that's 2 by 12.
For the minutes, can we recite again what the brick dimensions are, because they're not that, right?
No, they're not that, yeah.
2 by 12 by 4?
Yeah, so nominally, though-
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be some fraction with the joint that'll make up 12. Yeah.
So, what's that, what is the brick length? It's the Roman, right?
The actual height of the brick is 1 and 5/8.
Always like that.
11 and 5/8.
By 11 and 5/8.
Each individual brick-
According to the Belden site.
The full dimensional bricks, each individual brick is 2 by 12 by 4?
Yeah.
Or no?
Yeah, I think so.
I just wanna make sure Mercedes has it for the minutes.
Honestly, all you need is the Belden Roman, the size is baked in.
Yeah.
Belden Roman.
Belden, B-E-L-D-E-N. Roman.
Like, not, like Greek.
Like, yeah. Okay, so, motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good to see you, when are you, when are you, uh, striking ground? Breaking ground?
When we're breaking ground, we hope to break ground, uh, mid-winter before the-
Before the frost? Yeah? Soon, then? Yeah, fingers crossed.
There's a number of pieces that need to follow the question, that's still ongoing.
Yep, just curious, just curious when we can anticipate our landscape changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, good luck.
Okay. So, motion by Karen, Kevin, second, and we are all in favor unanimously. And I'm, I'm assuming, Don, I'm not hearing you, but when we're voting, you are broadcasting your yays and nays.
Yay.
I, you know, I don't, I still don't know why, I think it's very funny that we use oldie English. Aye! Like Scottish people are pirates. Hey, that's okay, aye!
Well, when we get to Pirate Day, maybe we'll have a meeting and it's Pirate Day, it'll be very exciting.
So, then, we have, uh, next on the agenda, yeah, um, considering a request for six-month extension of special use permit, 16 West Main Street, submitted by JMC Planning and Engineering. Um, I imagine it's for the same reasons that things take longer than, let me just see here. They don't give a specific. The applicant has been working with the construction team and design team on finalizing the construction details and logistics. We appreciate your cooperation. Yeah, again, it's, it's pretty, uh, pretty straightforward stuff, so, uh, we'll-
And this one's actually gonna be granted retroactively to become effective as of November 9th of 2023, and then apply six months forward, because their, their one year expired November 9th, a couple days ago.
So, we wanna make them contiguous by acknowledging that this is approved retroactive to start date of November 9th, okay?
Correct, yeah. Motion.
Okay, so the extension was received on May 9th to November 9th. This approval will start November 9th?
That was for something different, that was not for a special permit, that was for the subdivision site plan.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the motion was made by Karen to approve, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We need a second. We need a seconder.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Kevin seconded it. Am I skipping, I think I'm losing my mind.
You're just so freaked, you're so freaked out by the fact that it's like 5 to 9 and we're almost done, that you're just, you're coming unglued.
Oh, my God, that was serious.
It's like we're living in some alternate reality.
Time change.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta get my, I gotta get my stuff together. So, then, uh, we had the city council request to review local law, is that you or is that John, the local law?
Sorry, what, what did you say?
Individual, oh, that was us, yeah, so we completed that.
Did we-
We did, yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that we've got the comments-
Yeah, let's get to that.
That are going back to the city council, so I have in my notes from our work session discussion, the comments back to the city council would be to take a look at the legislative history, to understand, um, why it was limited just to commercial in the first place. Um, consider the vested rights issue, uh, that David had brought up. Um, and implications for, for current and future projects.
Great.
So, the vested rights thing would be, um, whether or not you, you add language saying that, um, in some way, shape, or form, it needs to comply with current zoning and building code requirements, or would on recurrent zoning and building code requirements be permitted to proceed?
So, then, motion to share, uh, these observations through memo with our esteemed city council.
Wait, did you include the, uh, the idea that, uh, public benefits would be maintained?
That, yeah, we talked about that that was, that, right, the site plan conditions and obligations remain, that's in, that's in the law.
That's part of what we mentioned.
That's in the law, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Or stated otherwise, if we think that public benefit or the public good doesn't warrant the two-phase-
But there's no, there's no connection, though, that's, see, that's what I was gonna, that's what I'm concerned about, is that like-
I'm gonna speak to him.
There is no conditional granting of this based on some public benefit, in that, right, it's not, so, I think what we're, what we were talking about is that, and I, and I think it's clear, it's in there, that there's a, even if it's phased, there's a conceptual site plan approval where for the overall project, all the requirements have to be met of the city laws and codes and zoning, and, you know, phasing doesn't release them from any obligations. And the only thing I, you know, the only thing that I ask, and it's kind of part of this, is that, we, we, you know, we talk about like, well, if they have a greenway trail, we don't want them to, you know, punt that down the road to Phase 99, but how do we demand, you know, how do we actually say, well, I want you to do it in Phase 2, and they're like, well, where in the laws does it say, you know, like, I'm always, I'm kinda concerned about, like, how do we actually get teeth into this thing, or- And, and, and when I kinda asked that rhetorical question before, like, what's the condition under which we deny this request? Like, I don't know that there is one ever.
Well, I think, I think the answer is we would not grant the first-phase site plan approval if we thought that it hadn't been developed to the point that we could be reasonably assured that things like the greenway trail were gonna be done.
You're right, you're right there, because, because technically, if, if, if a request and most do, 99.99% of them ultimately meet all the requirements of the law, we can't, we simply can't deny it.
Right, and that's what I'm, and, and-
And so then saying, so then-
So, they, they need to meet the requirements, to your point, and that's part of the process of our review, is to ensure that they meet the requirements.
Problem is, if you add the language about the public benefit, it's the unius exclusio problem, meaning if there's a sign that says, no dogs, cats, chickens, I can walk in with my parrot.
Yeah, or your snake.
Okay, got it, okay, that, that I understand.
Never say the negatives, because you can't cover them all.
Understood, but the principle of what we're discussing is covered, I guess that's what I meant.
What's it called, unius exclusio?
Yep.
I like that.
It's a new one.
Fancy.
That's a, that's a new one on you?
Where'd you get this?
I think you just made that up.
The other question I had was, and it's a specific, and I misspoke about the address, it was the, the project on Tyranda, that's, uh-
In that Creek Drive, Tyranda.
I'm sorry, yeah, and-
Where the commercial building has-
The commercial building, there's, there's actually been talk about severing that commercial building off and selling it, right?
There has been several times, yeah.
That would be, yeah, and that, that has, would that be allowed, selling of that property separately, that would be allowed under this?
No.
And it's not now? It's a mixed-use property, is why I'm asking.
Not in the sense that, no, no, I mean-
I just wanna be clear about that, because that's an actual current, you know, example.
Well, they, they asked us to, and we told them no.
Well, they wanted-
Or it was a sequence, that was a phasing.
They had come back at least once, maybe twice, to ask about the sequencing.
Yeah.
Um, to change the sequencing, and that's, I mean, that's, that's a code requirement.
Even that was a, was a difficult situation, or at least I remember the first time, because the applicant came in and said, I can't get financing for the commercial building because of, you know, COVID, the pandemic, various difficulties, and, and we said, well,
Tough luck.
Show us, you know, what, what do you have to show us, and they said, well, I have, I have a letter from one entity saying no.
Right, right.
And we were like, well, did you chime three entities, and they were like, well, this, you know, there's really only one that seems to be into these projects. But, but this is where, where I was saying before, like, when, if somebody comes in for a phasing application or whatever, you know, and, and we get on very shaky ground when we start kind of asking people to sort of do anything like, you know, prove financial viability, or open your books, or show, prove to me that you went to a reasonable number of lenders, everything starts to get really gelatinous under our feet at that point.
It's, it's, that's what Trump's in trouble for.
Well, look, again, you're right, it's, it's not within our purview, and we have to be somewhat, you know, the, you know, business of the applicants, their business is agnostic, I mean, obviously, the city has an interest in understanding the viability of projects, this is not something we necessarily have to, need to, or should delve into.
But applicants get to bring it to us in some degree when they express challenges and difficulties that they face, but it's never verifiable, you know?
If it's financial, I, I think there's ways to get relief, right, but you, I think it's, it's unreasonable to expect us to be-
When we look at things like this, again, it, it should be finances agnostic, it should be holistically as we're talking about it, and whether it makes sense for the city, not necessarily for the reasons that the applicant is utilizing it, or, um, all of the excuses, or, you know, appeals to their reasons, it needs to make sense from the standpoint of the law and all of the sort of potential unintended consequences that we're sort of, sort of trying to struggle through, and hopefully, you know, make sure, have teeth. But then ultimately, look, writing of laws is the, you know, the purview of the city council. Uh, we, we can only do what we're doing, and I think we do it well, is think about the impact not only to those unintended consequences, but also what it means for us during our reviews down the road somewhere in some of these scenarios that we try to game out, but you can't game out all of them. So, the best we can do is hope that the, the council understands from our perspective what those challenges are, and are doing the same thing when thinking about legislation and thinking about, think about it holistically in terms of zoning and what potential unintended consequences there are, and, you know, from the loophole, you know, like, you know, what loopholes can people then find and take advantage of in these, so, I think we've done our job.
My first inclination when I was reading this, it was sort of like, I'm sorry, hello? All right, so, when I was reading this at home, uh, my first, um, thought was, this sounds to me like it's gonna give you an excuse to not do your due diligence, I mean, I know that things happen, you know, the stock market goes up, it goes down, interest, the cost of borrowing money goes up, it goes down, but it, it really seemed to me like, why, why am I taking care of this person?
Hmm.
You know, when-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying, right, it's, it's a mechanism, I, I, as I understand it, at least, being put in place to allow for some leeway for applicants in market conditions like this, right?
Not being put into place, because it exists now, right?
Yeah, being modified-
Right. To apply to residential, instead of just commercial.
The, the risk might be that, like, it's, you're, you're socializing the risk and you're privatizing the, uh, reward, you know?
And I think the, the, the intended-
How are you socializing the risk?
The intended application-
No, you're not, actually, but that, but it, it, the idea, we're getting involved with people's finances and them making arguments.
All we're doing, all we're doing as a city, again, this is the city writing this law, is hearing from constituents, right, owners, to say, hey, guys, we think this would be helpful, and the council's saying, eh, okay, we agree, so let's, let's look at rewriting the law.
The intended use of the law seems very logical. I can only imagine what kind of financing gymnastics people have to go through when they're building multiple structures on the same site for different, so, it doesn't seem, that doesn't really trouble me, I'm just always concerned about, like, it's an unintended consequence where initially, someone comes in and says, I wanna phase this because I need some different financing sources, and so I'm gonna, you know, subdivide these different buildings, and then it's a downstream thing for a totally different reason, where someone comes and says, oh, by the way, I wanna do this, and we're like, you can't do that, and they're like, oh, but this is a separate parcel.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, we're, we're mixing two different, you know, specific topics that are worth talking about, but, and, and I understand why they're somewhat conflated, or at least they're intertwined. This isn't necessarily specifically, this law isn't necessarily specifically talking about phasing, right, again-
Yes.
It, it could lend itself to a phasing scenario, should the applicant decide that that's how they wanna, you know, approach their, their project, but, but, yes.
I should have-
So, just wanted to point that out and clarify it, but all points well made.
I should have put John Clark on the spot while he was still here, years ago, when the St. Luke's Church, uh, came to the, the city to start the school use on their property in the Activity Building, they needed to subdivide the property in order to do that effectively. And so, John Clark, at the time, had a comment that I never really fully understood the underpinnings of, but he said, uh, uh, he goes, you start allowing people to subdivide historic parcels, it's, it makes me queasy, and I, you know, and, and it's, it's that in the back of my mind that is kind of like, like I said, on, on the face of it, I totally understand the law and it doesn't trouble me, but it's just that in the back of my mind, it's like, you start subdividing these properties, what is, you know, what's gonna be?
The other example I just thought of, oh, sorry.
Let me just make sure about this, correct. Regardless of, this provision in the zoning code under the site plan approval, the subpart C that we're talking about, and the, the possibility of having effectively approval be granted in phases and subdivisions then be filed, this is not allowing anyone to do a subdivision they wouldn't otherwise be able to do.
Yeah.
Like, if it wasn't in connection with an otherwise existing site plan.
Exactly.
Right, right, it has to be in connection with sort of a master plan, right, you have a site plan covering a whole, whole site.
But, but if I had our hypothetical 100-acre lot, and it's, uh, three and a half minimum acre, five minimum acre zoning requirement, and I've got street frontage, rather than putting a site plan for a 20-house development, I could just say, I'm just subdividing this into 20 lots. I could just say, I'm just subdividing this into 20 lots.
Yeah, it's a totally, it's a totally different.
Wouldn't be getting any different result in terms of what you can subdivide it, what you end up with.
Right, the, the.
It all needs to meet the code.
Yeah, I mean, it's the 20 lot subdivision, taking a parcel, dividing it into 20 residential lots, that's a separate.
Totally different.
That's a separate situation than what we're dealing with here. Here we have one lot that is the subject of an approved site plan. And someone wants to take, for example, one of the four buildings on that lot that's part of that site plan and carve that building out.
Yeah, the footprint counts a lot.
As a separate lot. For one reason.
Just so they can get financing from a different source, perhaps.
Financing for the construction of that building, so that that building, that construction is subject to a different construction loan than the rest of the lot, perhaps. Or maybe that building is going to be, you know, finished first, so they want to put that into permanent financing while the rest of the lot is under a construction loan. That's, that's the reason why this is being, right, that, that's.
I get that, it's.
Yeah.
Does this allow someone to subdivide in a manner they wouldn't otherwise be able to subdivide?
No.
Sort, well, sort of.
Well.
Cause you wouldn't have a building footprint.
Because you wouldn't have like that island lot normally.
Is it tech, is it, right, is it technically a subdivision? I guess it is.
For the, like, there's not setbacks being applied and there's not individual frontage being applied to that little footprint. The entire, the zoning for the entire site pursuant to that site plan is what controls.
And then what you were saying was, sometimes it's not even like, let's say, a quote, legal subdivision in the sense that it's not being recorded to actually divide up fee estates and property.
It's not a realty subdivision under the New York State Public Health Law.
Right.
Okay.
Wait.
Which has a whole other regulatory scheme.
So, i- if, for example, uh, the Prophecy Theater, if they wanted to separate, uh, the hotel from the, uh, right? All of which was agreed as a prod, you know, whatever, because it might be separate and upward. Would they, uh, they would already have that right, because it's commercial property, right?
No, different. So basically this means.
A commercial, they would, it's part of a site plan. So, right, if they had a different finan, if they had financing for the construction of the hotel.
Which is totally like.
They don't want to burden the rest of the property with that, and yet they, they could, under our current law, come forward.
Cause that is usually done by a separate entity, right?
But again, I don't.
Even if they're relying on the accessory use provision?
Yep, because it's still all governed.
Still all the same. This, I see this as a very, a very simple mechanism, right? That the only, the only consequence I see for, for the city is down in the, actually, the, the county in recording is that it just creates a potential mess down the road of, you know, someone trying to parse. Right, it's, you could have a bunch of little tiny donut lots on a larger lot for this purpose. And it's all, it all comes down to the recording and the record keeping, quite honestly.
Is there any reason to codify that in the language of the law and say, these are non-realty? These will be recorded, or as the city anticipates, these will re-record as, because like you said, so you, you create all these donut lots and then 10 years down the road, the structure's burned down during, during a catastrophic fire, and somebody else comes in and says, oh, look at this weird lot configuration, I want to do X, Y, and Z. And everybody's like, ah, no, what do we have here?
So that's, there's, so there's, um, there would be a declaration of restrictive covenants and cross easements and stuff already on record, uh, with the county clerk's office.
Yeah, it comes down to the recording and the clerk, right?
Tying all those, the little donut lots together.
And then again, you know, either that owner, if something changes at some point in the future, 10, 15, whatever years down the road, and they want to do something different with that site, or a new owner, they have all of that to undo.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And the undoing of that, and that's, that's, that's what I'm getting at, it's like, you almost have to like, take a big eraser and clean it up if you want to kind of start from fresh, right? So it becomes a potential, you know, documentation issue, rather than, in my view, a review problem for us. It's just, you know, adds a layer. Anyway, so did we, forgive me, did we act on our recommendations in terms of our comments to the city?
Sure that we had all of the points, so, but there, there's been no motion.
Yeah, I had asked for a motion, and then people started talking.
Thank you for indulging my question.
Motion, a motion to instruct our attorney to deliver the comments we've been discussing to city council.
Motion by David.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close.
Motion to adjourn by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right.
All right, so I'm curious, if it's brief, like what was the?